They're proposing not to reduce the number of units in their, essentially, in their, in their plan. Yet they're dedicating reportedly eight acres or almost nine acres supposedly to affordable housing.
Correct.
Whereas if I read it correctly, could be added another forty or fifty units?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight units is what's there currently. So that approval doesn't change the number of units, it just changes the ownership. Instead of it being privately developed by a private owner and developed for market rate units, it would be developed for affordable housing. So the unit count does not change, they're not adding any more units, it's simply an ownership.
Okay, so, and the eight acres that we're talking about is the area that's currently covered or shown to be covered by the townhouses and the condominiums?
Correct. Um, Michelle could bring that map up.
I'm, I'm looking at it, okay.
Okay, yeah, it's on the backside of your drawing too, it's the yellow, area in yellow.
That was, uh, it was unclear to me that they were, I was trying to figure out where they're getting these eight acres from to give us if they're still gonna keep the same number of units. So what you're telling me is, the area that you've now got highlighted in yellow, unless the affordable housing people, whoever that might be, if this gets approved, decides to build townhouses and condominiums, will get something else. Is that correct?
No, the approval is for those townhouses and condos.
Okay.
And it's just, again, it's an ownership. Who's gonna own the land, who's gonna develop the land?
Okay.
Certainly, you know, once land is given to somebody, um, if they wanted to come back and amend it in some fashion, maybe they find that, you know, something else is gonna work a little bit better for the folks that they're hoping to provide housing for, that would be an amendment that you folks would have to review. But as it stands now, if this was approved as it is today, whoever gets that eight point eight acres, they would develop it as you see it there.
Okay. Um, is the, assuming if this were to be approved, is there a way after the fact, after approval? And that approval was predicated on the actual providing of the thirty, whatever it was, uh, affordable rental units on the west side? If the developer decided, oh, that really doesn't work, can they get out of providing those things by simply paying a fee?
We hadn't really, we hadn't talked about that at all. I mean, I suppose that's an option. As we've written the draft condition, um, we have suggested that it, they dedicate the eight point eight acres on the east side of Big Mountain Road, as depicted on that site plan, um, to the city or another entity for the purpose of developing permanently affordable housing.
Right. I'm talking about the units that are being offered with respect to the rental units though on the, I guess it is the west or northwest side, I'm sorry, I had my direction mistaken.
Um, currently, again, that's, uh, says thirty-two deed restricted apartments, so no, that is a condition of approval and we're not gonna issue a building permit until we have those deed restrictions recorded. Which is what we've been doing with all of our other projects.
Okay, so they're, okay. Um, okay, helpful. Um, can you describe for me on this site plan? I mean, we have a, a buffer of somewhere between, um, forty and two hundred feet. I'm looking at the site plan. I know what a hundred feet of setback looks like, and probably with two hundred, like, I don't see two hundred feet of setback anyplace here, where there's gonna be a buffer of two hundred feet.
Uh, you know, the measurements, I think the applicant can tell you. I would say some of the areas along the Big Mountain Road, um, at that intersection, there's, you know, quite a bit of setback.
Oh, okay, okay. Alright, thanks, Wendy, and then, um, why, this is my favorite, favorite, favorite topic, why in heaven's name are we requiring streetlights at this particular location in this particular kind of a development at the base of Big Mountain? Why would we do that?
That's just the ci- standard city, street standard. They haven't asked, you know, this project doesn't ha- have a subdivision application accompanying it, um, and that would be a, you know, subdivision variance that they could request at that time, but they have not asked for that at this point. I mean, it's just the standard.
Right, thank you. That's all I've got. Thanks, John.
To your comment about remanding this back to the planning board, I don't think we need to. State law requires us to hold one public hearing between the planning board and the city council, we're gonna hold four. So I think there's been due process from a public standpoint, but, good question, for sure, for the record. Just happy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Wendy and team, great job. Beautiful presentation, helps us a lot here. Um, I've attended the planning board meetings as well, and you've answered all our questions, I have just a couple here. Um, who did the traffic impact study?
Um, WGM.
And, can you explain, is it a consultant for the city?
No, it's the applicant's engineer.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, and, um, uh, so, am I correct that, uh, I need to read the WGM study that you have in the packet?
Correct.
Okay, so in the PDF, page one thousand and thirty-nine, uh, it talks about the details of the traffic study. You mentioned that it was performed on Christmas Day. I'm curious, because here it talks about, uh, Wednes- sorry, Tuesday, December twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, and Wednesday, December thirtieth, twenty-twenty, is that correct?
Right, it was during the Christmas season, not Christmas Day, it was just that time of year, right?
Fine, and then, just to be complete, it also was conducted on Wednesday, July seven, twenty-twenty-one, and Thursday, July eight, twenty-twenty-one.
Right, that's when they were trying to determine which time of year is the busiest, and that's when they discovered that the Christmas season was the busiest time of the year.
Thank you, and very last question, actually I have a question and a comment. Uh, have we thought or asked, uh, or do we need to perform an independent, uh, traffic impact study?
I'll let Craig answer that question.
Um, traditionally, we have not, um, required an independent traffic impact study, that's something council could direct staff to do, um, but we haven't in the past.
Thank you. Now about the process, uh, I hear the legality is mayor about not sending it back to the planning board. I actually feel the question was important to be asked by Councilman, uh, Sweeney. Because here, uh, you explained there are two options here. I either, as a developer, go back to the drawing board and do minor modifications, or I go back and do substantive modifications. If I do substantive modifications, am I correct to understand that there is a precedent to bring it back to the planning board?
It's in the zoning regulations that direct want to take it back to the planning board, if they're substantive.
Perfect, but in this instance, there were not substantive modifications.
We don't believe they're substantive, but you certainly could make a different determination.
That's fine, no, I appreciate that. So, am I also, uh, uh, a correct understanding that the findings that the planning board found are not affected by these minor modifications?
Right, the findings were made before the changes.
Right, but the changes, are, are any of the changes going to affect or deny any of the findings of the planning board?
I, I don't know if they would change their findings based on these modifications.
Appreciate that, I'm done with my questions.
Thanks, Giuseppe. We'll start with Ben.
Uh, Wendy, my first question is, um, why is the presence of this large multifamily building not considered a zoning variance to the underlying zoning?
The PUD chapter permits one to do multifamily.
So blind?
That's one of the permitted uses. A residential PUD permits multifamily.
Under any zoning, underlying zoning?
For a residential PUD. Yeah, it doesn't differentiate it. In the PUD chapter just outlines the different types of uses that are permitted, a multifamily is one of those.
Um, my second question has to do with the donated parcel, so.
The which parcel, sorry?
The donated parcel, excuse me, the nine acres. And, I know you mentioned that it, it's laid out here with condos and, and townhomes in it. And, whatever the ultimate development of this property is, I, I would speculate for affordable housing, it might not be what's laid out on the site plan. Why is it even in this PUD? Why not take it out of the PUD entirely? Is this parcel now encumbered by this PUD going forward?
Right, all, the entire area is encumbered by the PUD.
Including the donated piece?
Right.
What if we just took the parcel out of the PUD entirely, so that it was not encumbered by, it's just free land?
Ben, I think that the donated land is part of the proposed benefit of the PUD, so I don't think you can just take it out of the PUD.
Okay. Could you describe then, kinda what the process would be to change the development plan of that parcel? Would it be basically the same process we're going through right now?
Correct, yeah, it would be a, an amended PUD.
Okay.
And again, they intend to come back with a subdivision, obviously for the townhouses, so I think you would, you know, in the future, see a subdivision application before you.
Or, not just for, not just for the big parcel, but for the townhouses and all that as well? Okay.
Ben, is your concern that the housing type wouldn't necessarily be the best option for affordable housing?
It is, yeah, I mean, we, whatever happens to this parcel, it's very well may be that the site plan that makes sense is not what's here, and so, I'm concerned about taking a step here that eliminates those options down the road.
I mean, it, again, anything could be amended, you know, if it's not suitable, some affordable housing entities, like, you know, this is just not quite right, it's not gonna work for us. You know, they could certainly come back and amend it, amend it, it's, you know, it's just the same process.
Okay. Um, my, my next question has to, it, there is a trail that's shown here next to Big Mountain Road, and it's labeled as future trail. Is that future as in in this development, or is it at some unspecified future date?
No, that's part of the project.
That's part of the project?
Yeah, it's one of the conditions of approval that staff's recommending.
Has to be built first?
Yep.
Okay. And, um, my last question is, uh, Joe, actually, if you wouldn't mind. Um, would you provide a comment on the current need for the fires and future need for the fire station, and how long you think it would be until we would actually wanna build a fire station here?
We have the need now. Trying to get as many homes within five road miles for ISO reasons, this station, uh, is definitely needed. This wasn't the exact location that we picked after the Carnegie Mellon study, but it's pretty darn close. Also with the future possible annexation of Big Mountain, and knowing the five road miles for ISO, if you go to the top of the Big Mountain and drive down four point nine miles, this station pretty much is at the right location. So that's how I picked. When I look at the rest of the area that I serve, I need many more stations right now. This is just one of the many, but it would also help serve the top of Iron Horse, which is not within five road miles right now.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, please.
Joe, I know we're just recently exploring the idea of satellite stations, although we of course have our satellite station just south of Whitefish, off Whitefish Stage. In your opinion, is it the city's responsibility to be citing and developing substations, or should it be the responsibility of the fire service district area?
This station right here serves both the city, city residents, some people in the fire service area, and some people actually in the Flathead Fire Service Area. So there are actually three fire districts that are covered by this station.
And all three districts, of course, we do, would support this location?
So, no, I think we need to do it as a, a joint group. I have talked about, uh, you know, special improvement districts that would encompass the five road miles, so everybody would be paying their fair share, who saw a benefit of this.
Is the FSA on board with this proposal?
Uh, we'll be meeting in a strategic planning committee starting next month.
I think I'll be there with you.
Yes.
Anything further, Ben?
Uh, no, that's it for me, thank you.
We'll go to Rebecca, then we'll flip to this side and hear from Steve, and then we'll go lastly to Andy.
Okay, um, so Wendy, I just have a question about that land that's been, um, proposed as a donation. Would the city then be required, or the Whitefish Housing Authority, we would be paying for the build out too, or are they donating the build out as well? So, like, how, would it be like the Snow Lot, where we, we have the land and then we still have to get all the funding to build it?
Right, yep, I think it'd be very similar to the Snow Lot.
And so.
So free land, and then, yeah.
A very, very expensive building. So, that might be what you were saying. Okay, and then, um, Joe, the other question I had is, um, one, wh- what was the site you wanted? And the second one is, why wouldn't we have it on the other side of the road closer to Iron Horse? Does that matter, or not?
Uh, it, it doesn't matter, when I, when we look at a station location, it's the five road miles that I'm really looking at, and I wanna be able to cover as much property as I can with that location. Of course, the road networks don't always work out perfectly for that. The original site I was looking for was just at the bottom of Suncrest, though I had no property donated to us, given to us, so it would have included property acquisition. So, the Carnegie Mellon study just pointed out, suggested sites with never looking into it, was the property available?
Okay, and the other question I had is water, like, I know, you know, if we, there's been many, many comments about if we have a catastrophic wildfire event. We know we can get water from the lake, but if, how would we get lo- water from this place? Would it be on a well, or would we have city water, or how?
This, this has city water running out here, or, when they build out, they'll be extending the water some.
Okay, so we'd have that.
We'd have a hot drink.
And we'd have those water trucks?
Yes.
And do we have a, would we have a fire truck that would go up forty feet? That, isn't that a problem, some areas?
That's a problem all over the city. Our thirty-five foot ladder reaches twenty-eight feet, when you set it on an ankle. We have a lot of buildings over twenty-eight feet. What I do when we get these taller buildings is I ask them to build a secure stairwell, which means fire protected stairwell to get us access to the roof. Fully sprinkle the building, give us a standpipe system, those are things that we ask in lieu of not having a ladder truck.
Okay, and the last question is evacuation, that was another thing that came up a lot in the comments. Um, what is our, is evacuation planning in the event that there was a catastrophic event out there?
This location, being down at the bottom of the hill, not far from the lake, is not gonna be the target area for a catastrophic event. Now, the top of the mountain, going uphill, fire would move uphill, you know, in towards Big Mountain Fire District. Their plan is to shelter in place right now up top. They don't have another way out of, um, the top of Big Mountain. From this location, you probably can get around going around the lake and coming out in only, so in an emergency situation, there is a second evacuation route.
But, in the, we're starting to get fires in the winter now, like on the east side, we've had two. Um, is the, that road open in the winter? Okay.
Well, what you saw down in Colorado was a structure to structure fire, wind driven with embers. Um, this location would not be, um, affected by that, there's not enough with the clearing that they'd be doing around this structure. I am not concerned there. The existing structures going up Big Mountain and the neighboring communities have that risk right now, whether this development is built or not.
We, we also have Haskell as an evacuation route though, don't we? I mean, doesn't, don't the people on Big Mountain have that right to evacuate, um, that route?
Again, with the same que- that you mentioned during the winter, that's not o- that's not open.
Oh, yeah, that's.
There, there is a road that does drive between Big Mountain and the top of, uh, Iron Horse, that's not open year round either.
Okay. You're scaring me, I better stop, thank you.
I'm scared all the time.
Steve.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, John. Um, Wendy, I have a couple of questions for you. Do we have a tally of how many affordable units we have currently that we, that are deed restricted in, in the city?
We have eleven apartments.
Eleven apartments, right now?
Five of them are at the Riverview Meadows behind the Marriott, and six of them are at Whitefish Crossing.
Okay. Um, that's all we have. Okay. Uh, and then, question I, I have here is, the other question I have about this project is that they're, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're not asking for a density bonus here?
They're not asking for density bonus, they do not have to provide affordable housing.
Okay, so, s- so they don't, the only thing that they're asking for in re- in exchange, out of this PUD, in exchange for obviously building, um, multifamily units there, is just to go up to the forty feet?
No, the forty feet they get regardless, because they are providing affordable housing through the legacy home program. The only thing they're asking for is to build four stories within a portion of the multifamily building.
Okay.
Cause our standard is forty feet, but no more than three stories.
Okay, gotcha.
But the legacy home benefit, you can just get by providing affordable housing, that's how we rewrote that regulation.
Okay. Um, another question I have is about the, this, so they're, they're, it's, this eight point eight acres is a new thing since we looked at this at planning board, that they're gonna donate to the city? And instead of coming up with a new site plan for that area, they're saying, we're, we're gonna try to get this PUD approved as it is, to donate the land, and then it may have to come back in for a different site plan?
Possibly, yeah, correct.
Okay. Uh, it would have to come in for some sort of site plan anyway, because it would have to be a subdivision where there's townhomes, correct?
Likely, yeah.
Okay, and condos as well?
Hmm, I mean, it depends on how they'd end up doing it.
Okay, but whoever decides to take this on
Right.
will decide whether they wanna build these t- these forty-eight units as is, or if they wanna come up with something different?
Correct, mm-hmm, yep.
And currently the city is considering donating land, about eight acres of land, is that correct, out by the sewage treatment plant? Maybe that's for Dana?
Yes, the, yes, that is correct.
Okay, and, but we're getting eight point eight acres here, if, if this gets approved. Is that, I mean, I'm just trying to, so we don't, so, I'm just trying to understand that we're donate, the city is donating land free to a developer to build affordable housing in, on part of our property. But we're, in this project, we are getting, or somebody is getting eight point eight acres to build affordable housing. Okay, um, and then, Angie, what is our legal coverage or protection to ensure that we get this stuff? Because when I've asked before, we've, you've told us that, well, we can't make any of these conditions because of the state regulations that eliminated our legacy housing program. So how do we enforce these conditions, is my question?
Um, like we enforce any other condition. Um, you know, I mean, the legislature did take away our legacy homes program, but this is an entirely voluntary. So I don't think that it's subject to any sort of challenge under the, um, legislature's, you know, taking away ability for affordable housing. Um, I would say that, you know, prior to, we would, prior to, um, building permits being issued, we require that it be deeded to the city or to another entity that to develop. So, I mean, we do have the ability to enforce our conditions, we can pull our PUD approval if our conditions aren't complied with.
Okay, so the same with the thirty-two apartments?
Correct, yeah. The deed restrictions will be recorded prior to building permits being issued. And, you know, part of the reason that they are not, you know, present in your packet is, we kind of have a standard set of deed restrictions, but we really respect, you know, expect the developer to work with the housing authority at, at the, at the point where they go to build out to see what is really needed as far as AMI goes. But, yeah, we wouldn't issue building permits if the conditions weren't being complied with.
Okay, cause I, I think there's a fair amount of justified angst about whether or not this actually, these things actually happen in the long term. We approve these things, and then there's some, something comes up and we don't end up with the affordable units, but we have the ability to enforce this.
Well, I think one of the concerns that was raised is that staff can somehow unilateral- unilaterally get rid of that condition, and that's not the case. We wouldn't issue building permits if the deed restrictions weren't recorded with Flathead County.
Okay, alright, thanks. Um, and then, Wendy, this one, this one just goes back into the memory bank. So we, we had a, a project over by the school a couple of years ago now, that had, do you remember how many affordable units were, there were like, I don't know?
Seven.
There were seven proposed in there, okay, and those were, single, those were townhomes, or?
It was apartments, they were gonna do two eighteen complexes and provide twenty percent affordable housing.
Okay.
But, that didn't happen.
Okay, and that got denied by
Correct.
the council and the planning board. Um, and, uh, and what was built there instead, they just built by right, is that correct?
Yep, yep, seven condo building, seven condo units in each building.
Okay, and those were, how did those compare in mass and scale to what was proposed in the?
I think the building size ended up being about the same, they're just, they're really big condos.
Okay, and they're not affordable, by, by the, by the AMI standards of sixty to eighty percent of AMI?
Not by our definitions, right, right, I mean, maybe for someone, but.
Okay, not, but not by the, how we judge what's affordable?
Correct.
Linking it to the average median income?
Right.
Okay, and then the ninety-three South project, that, that, this was probably maybe four years ago now, I don't know?
Yep, right.
Trying to show my age. That was, what was, do you remember what the percentage was in that, was that thirty percent?
So, what they were gonna do was ten percent above the requirement. We're kind of on the cusp of adopting our inclusionary zoning, um,
Okay.
So then, again, of course, that went away, but they were proposing about five hundred units, and they proposed ten percent affordable housing above whatever was gonna be required. Of course, we don't require anything now, so that would have been fifty units.
Okay, fifty units?
Yeah, unless they asked for a PUD density bonus or something like that, but at a minimum, it would have been about fifty units.
Okay, and that was also rejected by council at the time?
Correct.
Okay, um, and there's nothing built there currently. Has anything been built on any of that property yet? No, except for the one proposal for a, a hotel?
Right.
That, that was denied by council recently, okay. Um, thanks, Wendy, I appreciate your, your help there with my memory. Um, and then, uh, Bridger, I just have a question for you. Um, what does it, what does it look like if we have a fire emergency? Like what, do, do people know the evacuation plan? Do people, like, do we disseminate that information? Do they know what's going on? Does, what happens?
The county, the, um, office emergency services for the county would work with the sheriff's office and the police department and other agencies to coordinate evacuation efforts. Though there's no written plan, you know, every, everybody's leaving those areas, those type of things, there's a route depending on what time of day and night, uh, the time of year, um, what roads are open, those type of things would dictate a lot of that, and Joe can speak to a lot of that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we're evacuating from, which way the wind's blowing, there's a lot of things that happen that are very incident specific. And the system that the county has is the Amber Alert system. My big concern is the number of tourists and other people that are in town, that we're gonna need a lot of direction on which way to go. So it is, when I, like I said to, uh, Rebecca, I'm scared all the time, yeah.
Okay. Um, but Joe, you wrote us, you wrote a letter that was contained in our packet that said that, well, can you just kind of explain what you said in that letter? Regarding the, the risk of this development?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of places that are at risk of fire. Um, developing fire when they, when, all fire starts small. Right, if I can put out a garbage can fire and I keep it to a garbage can and it's not a room, I keep it to a room and contents and it's not a structure, I keep it to one structure and it doesn't go to two, so all fires start small. Wildfires are very similar. Do I have a small campfire that gets out of control? Do I have a lightning strike that starts small? We need to get to these fires when they're small. This site gives us access to get to there quickly. Whether that building is built or not, right now, we have roads to get out there, there are people driving by that will discover these fires. I do not see this development as increasing our fire, the chance of a fire risk, because we'll be able to get out there and handle those fires. As you start to move up the hill towards Big Mountain, where you get into. where you get into denser areas that are not fire-wise, um, where you have steep terrain, there's more concern. But this area right here, I'm not as concerned about, and a lot of it is because of the traffic that we're talking about. The increase in people will spot fires, notify us sooner. So it's being able to jump on these fires quickly with our manpower.
Okay, and does the, is the added density of, uh, potentially 312 or 18 units, does that?
I think that increases my ambulance calls more than my fire risk. When you look at those buildings to propose with the parking areas around them, we're not having the forest and the vegetation built right up against the buildings. I think the buildings are, they're going to be built to newer standards, hardened for ember showers. We'll be following the WUI standards when we work on the surrounding area. More people is going to be more ambulance calls. More congestion on the roads is going to be more traffic accidents. So while I have a lot of concerns here, fires, while it's always a concern, is not my biggest concern.
Okay, all right. Um, I think I've taken up enough time. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Andy, anything to add?
Um, yeah, I'll just have one quick question for Craig, actually, because most of my questions have been answered. Under condition four, you have, um, a capacity impact analysis for the Viking Sewer Lift Station must be included. My question is, if this is the proverbial straw that breaks the camel's back, where do we go? And how do we extract funding for that? My reason for asking that question is when we went and upgraded the Viking Lift Station, we went to direct discharge from the mountain. They paid their share of it at that point, anticipating what their ultimate build out was. So I don't think we're going to be able to go back up to them and go, hey, you got to pay some more now because you've got 300 units that just got built at the base of the road. Which means that if we can't do it there, then if we don't extract it somewhere in this process, then that means the general rate payers, everybody north of the lift station ends up paying that. So, and I don't think when we negotiated the deal and upgraded that lift station, at the time, we anticipated this kind of density. And I know it was over half a million dollars to upgrade that almost 20 years ago now. So I'm assuming it's probably considerably more than that today. So, my question then, after explaining that, is at what point, if we get that analysis back and we go, hey, guys, you're too much for the system, that has to be upgraded, where does that condition come in once we approve the PUD and we can add it into a condition on the PUD?
Yeah, so the, the analysis has been completed, and it's, it's been shown that the Viking Lift Station can handle this subdivision or this PUD. So ultimately, it, it would be at the discretion of council. That's the way that the regulations read is, um, you know, Big Mountain was different because it was a, an actual sewer agreement. In this scenario, we just require the developer to show that the existing capacity, um, or the capacity currently exists. If council wanted to add a condition that they pay some portion, um, that would be at your discretion. But currently, um, the way that it's been done is that, um, the developer do the analysis, uh, and that's been completed.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thanks, Andy. I just, Frank, I'll let you go first, and I'll have a few.
One quick follow-up question for Joe, I guess. You referenced fire-hardened structures. I did not read any place in this PUD that that was a requirement, or that that was part of...
That's covered in the WUI standards and the building codes today.
Are they required to follow those?
Yes.
David?
Yeah, if it's in the, the International Building Code requirements and the, we've adopted the fireways standards in Montana. So, yeah, those requirements would be sprinkled, and fire safe are part of the requirement.
The structure elements is what I'm concerned about.
Yep.
The roof, the roofs, siding, that kind of stuff, they have to follow those, those rules?
Yeah, whatever's been adopted by the state of Montana that way, yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got, John.
Giuseppe, then Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question to Chief Page. Chief, uh, if we were not here to discuss this PUD and we were sitting for budget, are you planning to, uh, present in the budget the building of a new fire station upcoming?
I'm not putting that in my budget for this year, though that is one of the major topics that I will be discussing with the Strategic Planning Committee that we just recently put together.
And, thank you. And when you think of it in terms of outlay, what, what, what would a fire station cost? The tracks, people, building?
Uh, I don't remember off the top of my head what it is. Buildings are expensive. I, the last time I did a estimate, I was using $200 a square foot, which people are going to be laughing at me for now. Yeah, we're not building anywhere near there. The, the parts that I'm looking at when this, is that this is not going to be built by the city alone. This is something where we have to work with the Whitefish Fire Service Area, maybe parts of the Flathead Fire Service Area. That's why I was proposing a, you know, an area, taxing district within the five road miles. The residents and the properties that would be receiving the benefit of the lower property insurance would pay for it, so...
So are you saying then, uh, the cost of the land compared to the whole fire station, including staffing, what would it be? 50%? 10%?
I'm thinking the land is probably 50% of the cost. I, what I've been looking at for staffing is not to put career staff in, because that's expensive. Um, I've been looking at a resident program where we provide housing for, um, volunteers, free housing in exchange for, uh, on-duty time, which is a program used all around the country.
And, and you're including the, in your mind, the equipment too, the tracks?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Rebecca?
I guess this is for Dana and Craig. It's about the Big Mountain Annex Station and our water capacity. So we have, I know we have one really large project up there that people have mentioned that will be, um, being built out. But how do we, how do we assess whether or not we have adequate, um, water to, when we don't know what the capacity is up there, and as this road keeps developing, that's why I kind of think we should be studying when we're going to annex and how it's going to, um, kind of flush out. So we don't, there's a couple of huge, huge build outs up there, and I just think with the climate warming come in, I think we need to look at water capacity as well. So I just, that's a pretty general statement, but it also, I think, impacts whether or not this gets approved a little bit too.
So Rebecca, we can annex Big Mountain 20, after 2023. We, we aren't going to be ready to do that. There's a lot of analysis that has to go into that process. Um, we've got to look at it. We have a sewer district. We have a, a fire district. Um, and water on Big Mountain, you know, they're primarily wells where they have their private water system. So what, our water, you know, we, we've just done a, uh, an upgrade to our water treatment plant. I'll let Craig touch on it, but we have expanded our capacity, um, and expanded the building for future capacity increases too. There would be a cost to add those cells, but, um, I'll let Craig touch on what our actual capacity is right now. But we, we have improved that.
Yeah, I think Dana nailed it. Um, we, we have recently, um, increased our water capacity to 6 million gallons per day of treatment capacity up at the plant, but, um, that does not include Big Mountain, um, in our projections because they do have their own water system. They're on city sewer, but they have their own private, um, water system.
I'll, I'll start with that. In terms of the additional treatment capacity that we added at the water treatment plant last year, I believe we added two new cells to increase our treatment capacity to 6 million gallons per day. How many additional hookups did that quote by the city, given the DEQ moratorium that was in place?
I don't think I can give you that off the top of my head. Um, I, I can tell you that it did improve our water treatment capacity by 50%.
Okay. Any further questions from the council before I, I have two quick questions for staff. My first being the fact that we're dealing with Wisconsin Avenue, which is a state highway. We receive limited funds to help with the maintenance of Wisconsin. I believe we expended our funds a number of years ago with the chip seal and overlay project. How can we guarantee if this developer goes into negotiations with DOT that a roundabout's going to be approved and actually built? What if down the road, right-of-way acquisition becomes a problem? DOT doesn't agree to a roundabout at that specific location, yet one of the significant public benefits where, if this is approved, realized from this project, is the roundabout and the increase in traffic circulation at that intersection? What's our fallback?
They wouldn't build anything. I mean, the, building permits would be conditioned upon construction of the, uh, the roundabout, and building the roundabout would be conditioned on MDT approval.
Okay, and my next question is for the 32 units that will be deed restricted on the west side of the development. Have they identified a target AMI? Is it 60 to 80%? Are we, is that conditioned?
Correct, mm-hmm, yep, that's a condition with an average of 70, so they're meeting our Legacy Home requirements for that.
I think that's all I had. Anything further from council? We'll be with you real quickly here. Sorry for the, the extended discussions. But with that said, we did advertise for a public hearing on ordinance 22-2, which is the planned unit development.